This is the Commissioner meeting of June 12, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please? Director Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Schick?
Here.
I would like to have a moment of silence for Bob Davenett, former Councilman in Franklin, and recently he was a Commissioner on the Board of Sussex County Utilities Municipal Authority, SCUMA. And he's given back so much to the community over the years, a Franklin resident. And when I was a child, I used to hang out at his house because his daughter was a good friend of mine. So we'll think about his family.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 7, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following, New Jersey Herald and Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. And I always put mine away. I don't know if anyone else wants to, or any of the other Commissioners. Number five, approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner DeGroot and a second, Commissioner Hayden. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Proclamation certificates presentations. We have a presentation today of the 2023 audit by Ray Serenelli. Thanks, Ray.
Good evening, everybody. Ray Serenelli, the Audit Firm of Mississauga. So tonight, I'm presenting the audit, which brings a close to the 2023 year financially. Normally, I like to get up here and talk about a little bit about the financial statements, and then we'll go over the one recommendation that you have for this year. So I'll start with your general operations, and I always like to talk about the fund balance. As you know, the fund balance is like retained earnings in a business, right? It's the best economic indicator of how you're doing. So your fund balance for the start of 2023 was at 20.5 million. 7.7 million was used in the budget to balance the budget in '23, and then 8.9 was generated during the year through your operations. You leave ending fund balance of 21.7 million. So just to give you a little bit of what that means, 21.7 is about 17% of your general operations. That's what we look at, the fund balance as compared to your operations. So 17% is within your fund balance policy, and it's contrary, should be as recommended by the rating agencies. So really, a nice, strong financial year, 1.2 million growth in the fund balance, you know, a very strong year financially, which is what we've seen and has been the trend over the last five years or so. The economy has been growing. Inflation, as we know, is very high right now. And so by, you know, having a good long-term plan, as the economy grows, so too does your fund balance and where you're at in your budget process. So a very good place to be. I know we talked about recessions in the past couple of years. It seems like it may never come, but I get better to be prepared than not prepared. So very good, strong financial year. One of the biggest things, right, we talk about inflation, is interest. Obviously, interest rates are very high. We collected over $4 million in interest during the year on the cash that we have in the bank, which is probably three or four times what we've collected over the past few years. So obviously, you have something dramatically changing in your favor. It's going to help that fund balance. The other thing that I've been looking at is your grants, right? So grants are helping fund your operation a little bit. So even though you're still budgeting for it, some of that money is being funded to the grant. So we can't change what we're doing budget-wise. You know, we still have that good long-term plan, but we don't necessarily have the expense in that budget right now. But it's going to come back when those funds are gone. So, you know, you have the ARP money, but it's not just your ARP money, right? A lot of outside agencies got ARP money that they're funding into the county as well. So a lot going on grant-wise. In your trust funds, you know, funds that are held for specific purposes, everything operated normally and how it's supposed to. The two biggest reserves that I look at are your accumulated sick trust and your storm recovery trust. So you're covering liability, future liabilities with funds you have on hand right now. Both of those are very strong, particularly the storm recovery, which received a number of FEMA grant reimbursements for some of the expenses that happened during COVID. So that money, when we spend that money out of that reserve, it will be put back into that reserve for future emergencies. So, you know, everything looking very good, especially, you know, the amount of nutrients that you're getting at the current time. In looking at capital, where you account for your capital projects, and debt, debt was reduced during the year and continues to down the trend over the past several years. Just in looking at your projects, four new projects were started during the year totaling 19.7 million dollars. 13.6 of that was either grants from your own capital cash, and then only, you know, $6 million gaining from the debt. So continuing that trend of moving to using our own capital funds, less debt, you know, that long-term plan, you know, still working through your capital fund. Lastly, is your library fund. Again, you have, it's its own separate fund, so it has its own fund balance and indicator how well that fund is doing. So it started the year at 1.1 million dollars of fund balance. We used 6.25 to balance the budget and generated 700,000. So, you know, about 700, again, about 100,000 to 1.2 million. So library's in a very good place, strong financially. So overall, very good year financially for the county, which, you know, continues the trend. You've always had a long-term plan through the budget process, a good place to be at the end of 2023. So that's the financial statements. Does anybody have any questions on the financials before I talk about the one recommendation in the report? All right. So the one recommendation should be familiar. It's in the report every year, and that's that the county maintain adequate segregation of duties in the outside departments. You know, we really take a strict look at the standards, and the standards say that you should have a segregation of duties, meaning the receiving function should be separate from the dispersing function should be separate from the retrieving function, which that does happen here in the finance department. In your outside departments, you know, it doesn't make sense financially to hire three people to do the job that one person can do. So, well, it makes sense financially. As far as the standards go, they don't care what's good financially, they care about the accounting and the management. So, you know, the recommendation goes in the report every year, just so that you're aware and have a higher level of oversight when looking at those outside departments and the finances going there. So one recommendation, you know, everything else running really very smoothly, which is evidence by the good financials. Any questions on anything in the report?
County food pantry was picked up in the audit?
So the food pantry is part of the social services audit, which is a separate audit from the county administration. So that audit will be done, actually, we're doing that audit right now, and should be done by this.
I think we're in good shape. Very good shape. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
As always.
Thank you.
Number seven, public hearing. Final adoption ordinance 24-01. At our regular meeting held on March 13, 2024, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald issue of June 5, 2024, together with the notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Bond ordinance providing for various 2024 capital improvements by and in the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey appropriating 3,750,000, therefore authorizing 2,775,000 bonds or notes of the county to finance part of the cost thereof. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be opened?
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance?
Christina, is there a reason there's no microphone?
It's not working, so these are picking up. Okay, yeah, that's why I moved it closer. Okay. Is anyone present to be heard on this ordinance? Okay. Can I get a motion that the public hearing is closed?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner DeGroot and Commissioner Hayden. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Motion that this ordinance be finally adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center?
So moved.
Commissioner DeGroot in a second. Commissioner Schick, any discussion? A roll call, please. Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Okay. Final adoption of ordinance 24-02. At our regular meeting held on March 13, 2024, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald issue of June 5, 2024, together with the notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of 2024 capital improvements at and for certain facilities with Sussex County Community College located within the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey appropriating 2.8 million, therefore an authorizing issuance of 2.8 million bonds or notes of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey for financing such appropriation, the principal of and interest on the aggregate principal amount of which will be entitled to state aid pursuant to Chapter 12 of the laws of New Jersey of 1971. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be opened?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner DeGroot second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Just state your name and municipality.
John Snyder, Sandistown. Just wondering, is this part of their budget that was approved on board school estimate?
This was approved last year by the board of school estimate. It just takes another year.
Okay. Ours is different, which I'll give a little update on that.
And I'm also wondering, does this have any bearing on, but I've heard of $20 million surplus that the college has?
Yeah, I can discuss that, too, in my Commissioner comments, because I'm going to talk about the Board of School Estimate meeting that we had.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner Schick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Motion, can I get a motion that this ordinance finally be adopted?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot, a voice vote or?
Voice vote.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. Commissioner DeGroot and Commissioner Schick seconds. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yep.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Final adoption ordinance 24-03. At our regular meeting held on March 13, 2024, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald issue of June 5, 2024, together with the notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Capital ordinance providing for general capital improvements and the acquisition of certain capital equipment in and for the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, and appropriating the sum of $7,244,214, consisting of $6,250,786.78 from the county's capital improvement fund, and $993,427.22 from the county's reserve for the departmental improvements to pay for the cost thereof. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be opened?
So moved.
By Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance?
I'm doing Derek's tabbing, and you're tapping this part. Just curious, how these capital project funds, is there a place where we can get a listing of what they will be covering?
Is that something that they can get without having to do an Oprah?
I'm happy to do an Oprah, just who to submit it to would be hard.
Okay. Would that be Elka? Would that be you? Okay.
Yeah, just, you could submit it to the, to my attention, and then we'll distribute it appropriately. Thank you.
And that goes for the school, the county college as well?
That would be through the college.
Through the college, got you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted?
So moved.
By Commissioner Schick and Commissioner DeGroot seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick in a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call, please. Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the podium and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Hayden and second Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, the floor's open.
Good evening. I'm Sam Seaman from Stillwater Township, and I'm here to talk about the Dennis Library and those issues pertaining to it. Before your time, the freeholders had a series of commissions and boards for citizen input. Now, the commissioners are the only vehicle for citizen input, and I'm disappointed that you only allow three minutes for talking. So at that time, the then Freeholder Board determined that it was best to abolish all autonomous boards and commissions, and so the library commission was abolished at that time. The thinking then was that the freeholders would have everything under their umbrella, and they could best handle all of the issues pertaining to services within the county. Unfortunately, when things float to the top, when responsibility floats to the top, some things are forgotten. You know, some things that were under the purview of those boards and commissions then got diluted as they floated upward. You know, well, who's the shade tree commission? Who's going to handle shade trees? Anybody here handling shade trees now? We used to have a shade tree commission. The, just to reemphasize it, citizens need an adequate amount of time in order to provide input to the commissioners. And if we had a microphone, I know my voice is loud, but if we had a microphone, everybody in the room would have been able to hear the previous speaker. I had a hard time hearing him. The Dennis Library, as most of you know, has been an agenda item for quite a while, and it serves many people in the community. I live in Stillwater Township, and I commute down to the Dennis Library because it's close by, they can handle all of my needs. However, they cannot handle all the needs of citizens. They do not have a handicapped accessible front entrance. They do not have a handicapped accessible bathroom. You have to go up a flight of stairs, and if any of you have been in there, you know that handicapped individuals cannot be serviced at that library. They can't use the computers or anything else. They can't go through the stacks. That's an important thing to keep in mind, because if we're a full-service county, as we talk about being, then we need to be a full-service county in all aspects of the services that we provide. We can't eliminate accessibility to one group of citizens. Libraries are vital to the health of the community. We know that with book banning and with the fight against education, the closing of school libraries, that we have to keep the public libraries open.
Time.
For the health of, time, okay. Well, I can stop now, but I got to tell you, I don't see anybody lined up here.
But they, they probably will come up.
And, and I, as I said, three minutes.
Right.
Is not an adequate amount of time for public input.
Yeah, exactly. I agree.
We will, we will take that into consideration. And as for the microphone, we do have a new system ordered, and we're waiting for it to be installed, and it'll be, it will also have, be able to livestream our meetings for those that can't attend. So, but the microphone, obviously, is an issue. It's an issue with us, too.
My voice is loud, so I'm sure everybody in the room can hear it.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, I'm pretty, I'm pretty loud, too.
So I'll just, I'll just end at that point, saying that the commissioners then are now the library commission.
Right. But I'm not opposed to having commissions, and I don't, this board is very open with the public. We're all accessible, and if, you know, I would be more than happy, if you want to discuss it further, to give you my number, and you can call me, because we.
We all have email.
We, we, we all have email, but, you know, not everybody likes to email, but, you know, we always respond when we have residents, you know, reach out to us, and I'd be more than happy to hear.
I want to be right at that point, okay? Going to the library commission or to the Sussex County?
Sir, we gotta keep, sir, we gotta keep to our three-minute limit.
Yes.
There's some people in the public, too, and it's.
Would anybody else want to stand up?
He can speak in the, in the open public session, yes. Yes. Yeah, he can, he can have three, because that's a whole different thing. So, yes.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Director, if I may, basically, what he was speaking about as a committee is, we have that, we have a liaison.
Right.
So if, and I think Commissioner Hayden is liaison to the library.
Right.
So we can direct him, right, to Commissioner Hayden, he can address those things. So we actually have what he's talking about.
Yes.
So that, I think, needs to just be reiterated.
Yes. And, and things that previous, you know, the freeholder commission boards have done, you know, we are our own board, and we are doing new things, like if they've canceled things, it's not this board that has. So, but thank you. Anyone else on agenda topics only?
Good evening. My name is Kelly Teckman. I live in Newton. I am here, again, to advocate for the Dennis Library and for its renovation, so that it will be brought up to promote and, you know, for, to help the handicapped and to help the young mothers with strollers who struggle, to help the senior citizens. And it's, not everyone uses the library. One of my sons said that to me today as a teacher, and he said, but we used to do so much growing up, and now everyone's got devices and, you know, computers and so on. But there are times that you really need to go to the library and to look things up, to have research, to do all kinds of things in the fight of your life. And when I go in the library, I am, there are so many young kids in there who do not have, you know, Wi-Fi at home, and they use the library for that. They use the library to ask the librarians what help is free project we can get them. You know, I think those of us that have access to all of that at home, there are so many people, particularly in our county, who don't have access to it. And the Dennis Library provides that now. What could it provide if it was needed? What if there was better Wi-Fi? And what if, you know, the what is for the Dennis Library? It serves eight communities at my last count. That's their library, Stillwater, their library and/or their library. There are so many people who would benefit from updating it and renovating it, and I continue to, to, please, let's do something. And thank you very much for all your time and your patience with us.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Wendy Whipple, Andover Township. We've now been coming to these meetings since March of 2023. We've now heard two budget presentations and two audits, actually. It's nice to hear a strong financial picture of the County of Sussex based on funds gained from investment accumulation and debt reduction. So that's great to know. Thank you for taking care of that. Thank you also for submitting the substantial change form to the state librarian, and we're anxious to find out what those numbers issues are that Mr. Steinhardt referred to at the last time we spoke about Dennis Library. It would be wonderful if the commission would, the commissioners would provide what was promised in 2022, and that was over $3 million. Scale-down project even would get Dennis Library to a state where we could have accessibility. We are understanding that the funds from the sale of the homestead were earmarked for this match, and these funds are separate from the $21 million surplus. I hope you all received the letter from retired Judge William McGovern, who couldn't come this evening, and urging your continued action and approval. He actually wrote that letter and sent it to you before I even called him after this meeting. The attached article was very passionate in outlining the experience of one individual who argued that his life was actually saved by what his family learned at the public library. This is a vital service, as Mr. Seaman said. His family was able to get into their public library, and imagine the great number of people who have similar stories. Please approve this project so that more people like Eldon Ham can get into Dennis Library to have a similar situation. To quote Judge McGovern, "This is an investment in people, literacy, culture, and community. Let's get this thing going, please. Time is money." If you're here in support of Dennis Library, would you please stand?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Louise Goerke. I live in Stanhope, but I teach at Newton High School, and I'm here to talk to you about what the Dennis Library means to my kids, which are all of our kids, but they're the kids at Newton High School. Everyone thinks that only the little kids go to the library. Everyone goes to story hour and picks out their, their picture books at the library, but the big kids, they need the library. They love the library at Newton High School. They spend as much time as they can there, but school has a 2:35, and all the rest of the day, they need somewhere to be, and they need somewhere to be that serves them, that has everything they need, and they deserve the best library that we can get them. And that is our job as the owners. So we need to do our job to give them what we can, and the Dennis Library is getting there, and we can do so much more for them. And they're not going to come up here and tell you it, but I see it, and I know they need it, and so I want to talk to you about that for them. So please do the best you can for our kids. They need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on agenda topics? Can I get motion to close the floor or public, oops, we have one, sorry, sorry about that.
I'm not totally familiar with what's happened in the last few months.
Can you just give us your name and, please, just call me?
The fake microphone.
Just speak a little louder, the mics up here are picking it up.
Okay. Irene Darkley, Green Township. Is that enough?
Yep.
Maybe you'd want my address or phone number.
Nope.
Okay, so I'm not totally familiar with what has gone on at the commissioners' meetings in terms of the library, but I will tell you about an experience that I had about the Dennis Library recently. I wanted to go to the chair yoga class, which was being held on the second floor.
The chair yoga class?
Yes. Yoga's sitting on a chair.
Okay. I didn't, I never heard of that. I should do it now.
It's one, you're much better than getting down on the floor and trying to get it covered. I charge for yourself. Anyway, so the chair yoga class was on the second floor. So the cherry yoga class was on the second floor. And I, you know, didn't want to have, to be able to go up the stairs and back down the stairs, you know, numerous times. Because access to the bathroom requires you to go down the stairs and then up the stairs. And then to get back to the cherry yoga class, to go down the stairs and up the stairs. So needless to say, I did not attend because it, at my age, you know, it's important to have access to a bathroom without having to go up the stairs four times. You can understand that, right, some of you? Probably not, Jack, but. So anyway, that was my most recent experience. I think it's critical that you guys address the issue of Dennis Library. It needs to be upgraded, no question about it. And I have a question. Page one here, can I try it again? You had 1.1 million that was dedicated to the library, and 625 was used to balance the budget. Can I add to that?
Unbalanced for the library.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. What's that about?
That's the actual budget?
That was for their budget.
Well, I under, for what? Whose budget?
Library's budget. The library has a separate budget. It's taxed differently and it's got its own budget as well.
Did I approve that? My next question, what is AARP funding need?
American Rescue Plan. It's federal.
Thank you very much.
One minute? And I was generous. I gave you a little bit of extra time because of the cherry yoga.
Cherry yoga.
We had to hear how that ended.
Christina, I don't know. I'm gonna have to send you some donations. Anyway, obviously, I am very much in favor of the Dennis Library being upgraded. It just needs, I mean, it's a historic building. It's a beautiful building. And it's critical for people from Stillwater, Green, obviously Newman, you know, Andover, I imagine, Freeden. You know, this is our library. So let's be sure we take care of it. I'm so glad you're speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Don't want to cut anyone off this time. Anyone else? Agenda topics only? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comments?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden and a second from Commissioner Schick. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Number nine, commissioners' comments. I'm gonna start on the end where I always do with Commissioner Hayden.
Thank you. This is from the S.S. County Library System. The summer reading adventure begins June 27th at your Sussex County Library. New Jersey's Sussex County Library System invites all ages to join its 2024 reading, summer reading program. Adventure begins at your library. From June 27th to July 27th, simply read one or two books, attend events, and then fill out raffle tickets to qualify for prizes. Evening program begins Thursday, June 27th with the House Fun, Household Fun Fitness, bringing fun games and activities to teens and tweens at the Dorothy, Henry, Branch, and Vernon at 10:00 a.m., at the Franklin Branch, Franklin at 12:00 p.m. On Friday, June 28th, library favorite Brian Richards returns to present the greatest adventure begins at your library magic show for kids and families. The Magic Fund will be at the Dennis Branch in Newton at 10:00 a.m. and the Main Library in Franklin at 12:00 p.m. All ages are invited to join our live tour of Costa Rican Coffee Farm via Zoom on Friday, June 28th at 10:00 a.m. Adults and families with older children will enjoy the Thanks for the Memories Sing-Along Concert and collaborative songwriting adventure led by award-winning singer, songwriter Lorraine Faro from Life Center Stage. Raise your voices with Miss Faro to the old pop and Broadway favorites on Friday at 11:00 a.m. Louise Child Branch in Stanhope for 2:00 p.m. and the Sussex Wantage Branch in Wantage. On Saturday, June 29th, join Mrs. Faro at the Franklin Branch, Franklin at 11:00 a.m. The Main Library in Franklin at 1:00 p.m. The Dennis Branch at Newton at 3:00 p.m. Finally, dinosaur adventures will enjoy a visit with Terry the T-Rex and Coda the Loda, the Triceratops Twins. On Saturday, June 29th, the summer reading adventure T-Rex visits with dinosaurs arise will be at the Lewis Child Branch in Stanhope at 10:00 a.m. And the Sussex Wantage Branch at Wantage at 12:00 p.m. Visit the library throughout the summer for fun. Educational events for all ages, kids, teens, will enjoy summer favorites such as Read Toy Dog, STEAM activities, craft storytelling, book clubs, games, so much more. Adults, join the library for wild edibles, walk in Stokes Forest, live fishing, self-defense classes, beekeeping, flower stamping, safari travel, and drum circles. Stop by your local branch or visit sussexcountylibrary.org/summerreading for complete details. And again, libraries are for all ages. I was a big library person. I have a huge book collection, so I encourage people to use the libraries we have. I guess the board estimate you're gonna talk about that? Yeah, I mean, I think we had a good meeting with them and I think we learned a lot. So, you, myself, and Schick.
Commissioner Schick.
Thanks. So since our last meeting, it's been an extremely busy schedule. We had a number of township days that I've attended and met with the first responders. I had a great meeting with the people who were operating, I think, at Atlantic Health, the helicopter for the, at the Wantage Day. I was honored to be with Assemblyman Inghamore when he did the bicentennial presentation in Greentownship. Also, the American Legion Post 86 in Andover. They had a lot of questions about the veteran services and transportation that we provide them to and from the VA centers around the state. So, in northern New Jersey, I should say, excuse me. And, you know, we were able to iron out all of the resources for them so that they can adequately grab a hold of the scheduling. They were not happy with having to schedule maybe seven to 14 days in advance. But nonetheless, there are veterans and I tried to appease them the best that I could. Also, I attended the board trustees meeting with the college and the school estimate meeting on the 29th. And I know that you have a lot to present with this, so I will be short and brief with that. And that's what I have to report for today.
Commissioner DeBrue?
Yes. You can read that while I'm speaking and it's related. But over the past month of May and early weeks of June to today, I've been working towards my third yearly goal of supporting and enhancing programs offered by the Division of Senior Services. During this period, I conducted research and obviously started brainstorming on how I could help senior services. And it led me to propose the idea of starting a countywide seed library. This initiative aims to provide seniors, consequently residents, families, and such of Sussex County with access to seeds for growing foods, promoting sustainability, and educating everyone on healthy eating and gardening habits. Upon research, I discovered that Camden County, all counties, was the first in New Jersey, and actually the only county in New Jersey, to establish a countywide seed library, launching this initiative just five months ago, back in January. I met with Camden County's programs coordinator in May, who was very nice. And she shared Camden County's techniques and organizational structure for launching a successful program. In June, I met with our very own deputy county administrator and senior services director, Lorraine Hents, to discuss logistics, education for seniors, and seed acquisition solicitation strategies. I also met during this time with library director Will Porter to explore using Sussex County's very own libraries as conveniently located distribution centers throughout Sussex County. Additionally, I also engaged with Rutgers Master and Gardeners, co-op of Sussex County, who expressed a very strong interest in leading educational courses at our local libraries and/or senior centers. The county seed library will be implemented in four phases, essentially. The first phase, beginning in the upcoming fall, so fall 2024, will involve soliciting seed donations. The second and most critical phase occurs in early 2025, focuses on residents ordering and picking up seeds. The third phase in the spring and summer will include organizing, educational events, workshops, teaching residents the various topics of seed starting and healthy gardening techniques. And finally, the fourth phase, the end of the year, will involve conducting workshops on seed saving and carrying out a comprehensive survey to evaluate the program's impact, including plant health, production, and yield, and then starting it all over to do it again. All in all, for my collaborative meeting with Lorraine, Will, you know, we were really aligned in the direction of getting this set up for this upcoming fall and launching in January. Additionally, my contact in Camden County will keep us updated of any new developments and insights on what they encounter. But I talked to her yesterday and really it's a successful program down there. And she's the one who, you know, is kind of mimicking it. We're just bringing it up here to Sussex County. Of course, the most important thing on everyone's mind is, is this going to cost us money? No, it's no cost to the county taxpayer or, you know, affecting our budget in a sort of way. Like most of the things that I do, I just put effort towards it. But nonetheless, my fellow commissioners, if you have any questions, please let me know. Lorraine, I'm happy to talk with you more about it. We can talk about new business if you'd like, but we have plenty of time to figure out anything of that. Additionally, a week ago, I had the pleasure of attending the strategic planning meeting for the Division of Health. The meeting outlined the division's goals for the next five years and set priorities to make Sussex County the healthiest place to live, work, and play. I found the meeting extremely educational. On my end, I would like to thank Christine, Jennifer, and all the county workers for their hard work and dedication who attended the meeting. Sticking to the Division of Health, on Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, the Office of Public Health Nursing will be hosting two health clinics at 201 Wheatsworth Road, Hamburg. First, a child health clinic from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then second, in the afternoon, a health check clinic, 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. To schedule an appointment for either clinic, please call 973-579-0570, extension 1275. Finally, just for the Office of Mosquito Control, free spotted lantern fly traps are available to all Sussex County residents. We did this, well, the county did this last year and distributed 524 traps last year. Reminder that each resident can receive a maximum of two traps per household. Residents who have not yet received their traps can contact the Office of Mosquito Control at 973-940-5225 to schedule a time for pickup. Traps can be picked up at the mosquito office anytime, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. However, scheduling an appointment is preferred to ensure staff availability. In addition, after a month of testing for diseases in mosquitoes, the mosquito control program from the Office of Mosquito Control is happy to report that Sussex has zero positive cases. Sussex County Office of Mosquito Control Superintendent Paige Lockburner will also be giving a presentation on mosquitoes and their control at the Franklin Library, located at 103 Main Street in Franklin, New Jersey at 2:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 13th, 2024. Registration for the presentation is preferred. Please call 973-827-6555 for more details. That's all for tonight. Thanks.
Deputy Director Carney?
Thank you. Traffic advisory bridge HO5 temporary closure. This is a replacement of Parsons Road in Hampton Township. Bridge HO5 carrying Parsons Road will be receiving a replacement of the structural deck panel system. Original bridge deck panels have deteriorated over time and have been previously patched. Therefore, replacement of deck panels will increase the longevity of the bridge and improve public safety. Construction is anticipated to start Monday, June 17th. It is estimated to last one to two weeks, barring any adverse weather conditions, schedule impacts, or unforeseen circumstances. A detour route will be established along Junction Road, Hampton Township roadway, County Route 622, Frank Chandler roadway, Hampton Township roadway, County Route 521, and County Route 626 within the townships of Hampton. I have a report, it's a little lengthy. I will read fast, but it's from District 24 and apparently they've been very, very busy. But before I read that, I know a lot of people have been reading about Route 15. I don't know how much its aggravation is causing everybody here, but it's causing me a lot of aggravation. I literally have to leave a half hour early to beat the traffic and then I'm sitting in my truck before work starts at 7:00 in the morning. And, you know, it causes me that headache. So concerning the Route 15 south traffic closure in Jefferson, NJ DOT held two meetings with Senator Space and Assemblymember Fantasia and Inghamore and other local officials to update on their plans. NJ DOT advised that they will be installing a temporary structure with two lane access to accommodate Route 15 traffic going south again. NJ DOT Commission said he can safely project the structure will be operational within six weeks. I didn't say that, I'm just saying. NJ DOT also committed to a 24/7 work crew operation to greatest extent possible until the temporary structure is put in place. In the meantime, the NJ DOT said they will continue to improve signaling, striping, and other traffic operations in order to improve the flow of traffic through detour areas. I'll leave it at that. Couple bills that they're working on. A3446 was recently heard by the Assembly Education Committee, Senator Space, and Assemblymember Fantasia, Inghamore, all opposed to bill. The bill allows the Boards of Education to adopt policies on the curation of library material. Now where in the bill, now where in the bill are Boards of Education and the governing boards of libraries required to ensure that obscene material, aka pornography, is prevented from being on the bookshelves? The bill requires Boards of Education and governing boards of public libraries to adopt policies creating a procedure regarding requests for removal of library material from a school library or public library. These policies are to, among other requirements, establish a mechanism to challenge a library material, create a review committee, and require a written statement of reasons on the final determination of the library material. Again, the removal of obscene material is not mentioned in the creation of these committees. And finally, the new bill provides that a school library staff member, librarian, and any staff member of the public library is to be immune from civil and criminal liability for good faith actions in complying with the requirements of the bill. If a librarian knowingly puts obscene materials on a bookshelf accessible to minors, there is no accountability. With the issue of the sexual abuse of students which has taken place in schools, we have no business creating immunity for anyone in school setting for disturbing, distributing obscene materials. Got a little bit more. Legislation sponsored by Senator Space that would establish an economic growth program to promote business development in less populated municipalities was advanced. Senator Space's bill S-1435 would establish a downtown economic growth program to provide financial and technical assistance to encourage the development of businesses located in small municipalities. Town of Newton, Sussex Borough, and Branchville would qualify under this bill. The bill would authorize certain businesses an income tax credit for eligible businesses and would also establish a downtown economic growth assistance fund. The Economic Development Authority, EDA, would be responsible for creating this fund to provide loans and technical assistance to businesses within less populated municipalities. Jack, you're gonna like this. This is the loan program for beginning farmers. I don't know if you saw this or not. Did you see this?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll give you this when we're done. Assembly Fantasia's bill directing the NJ Economic Development Authority, NJEDA, to establish a loan program to assist beginning farmers in financial capital purchases was released from committee-A4229. Access to capital to purchase and lease land and machinery and basically start a farming operation is a major hurdle for most beginning farmers. I think you can concur with that, Jack. The NJEDA, in consultation with the Department of Ag, shall develop and administrate a beginning farmer loan program to facilitate acquisition of ag land, ag improvements, and depreciable ag property by beginning farmers. A beginning farmer would have to apply to NJEDA and meet the criteria in the bill. So you get the gist of that. I'll leave that at that. All right. I too was able to attend some Memorial Day parades. Hopaccon Parade, I attended the last three years. They always do a good job over there. And also the Branchville Parade, which is produced by Post 157, which I'm a member of. And the weather, some, you know, Memorial Day wasn't the best weather. But there was some towns that canceled it. And I talked to the commander at 157 and I said, are we gonna have this? He goes, yeah, I'd like to have it. And I said, well, if we can sacrifice walking in some rain, considering what our veterans did for us on Memorial Day, I don't think that's a big deal. And that's what they deserve. So it was a great event. I was happy to be a part of it. We got our pins in. This is something we've been talking about for a while for our employees. If there's any employees here, we got some in the back. We got our 25-year, 30-year, 35, 45, 40, 45, and 50-year pins. They are in. We're gonna start a presentation at the end of the year in December. Whoever, you know, has been here that long, we'll do a little presentation, kind of do a little shindig for them. They will also be in the foyer on a placard with their names on there. So it's a long time coming, acknowledgement of people working here, you know, 25 years and up. It's an important thing for morale. Speaking of morale, I did go to the Fleek Lodge today after Bible study. They were very, very happy. We have a new employee. The morale was very good. And actually, that was their words, not mine. So they all said, you know, the morale is very good, which is always good to hear. I got 0.0 complaints, which is odd. Because there's always something that somebody has to say. But they were very, very happy about that. And, oh, one last thing, just because this bothers me. So obviously, there was an election. Some of you know I was in that. So I got a call from a very good friend of mine, probably one of my best friends. And he went to the polls and they gave him a hard time about his signature. Apparently, it didn't match. So they said, you gotta write it again. He said, well, that's my signature. So he offered them the license. So my understanding now, and I just got this information from Christina, and I'll read this to you. I do have a problem with it, but I'll read this to you. If signatures are inconsistent, don't match, voters ask to resign. If they still- are not inconsistent, are inconsistent, don't match, voters ask to resign. If they still don't match, voter is then given a provisional ballot. Workers are not permitted to ask for driver's license, nor are they allowed to touch them. So just so everybody understands our new systems that we have, they have a scanner on there, and I deliberately always give my license to them because I want them to scan it. It, it, there's no miscommunication. Your, your face is on there. Your name is on there. Shows who you are. Um, they can't touch that. So I don't understand why we have these machines. I did talk to, uh, Senator Steinhardt before the meeting. This is something not that the Republicans are, are aware of. They don't like it. But when you are the minority as a legislator, things like this happen. So again, voter integrity is very important. We actually passed our resolution, um, when I was here, and I sponsored this actually at our June 23rd meeting in 2021. So the Dems and Governor Murphy need to figure this out because this is nonsense. We have a license. You need a license to get a library card, and we don't need one to vote. It's a problem. Sorry for my tangent, but very passionate. That's all I have.
Done. Okay. I'll start with Board of Elections while we're on that. Um, uh, today was the last day that they'll accept the mail-in ballots. They needed to be postmarked by Election Day, and the election will be certified on Monday. Um, I too would like to see us have to show an ID, but since that's not the case, um, you know, that's of the law, that's not gonna happen. Um, but I think that things went generally very smooth, wouldn't you say? Yes. So, um, congratulations to the Board of Elections on that. Okay, County College. Uh, we began hearing the grumblings that you guys have heard about the county having an excess of $20 million. Um, so we started having meetings with, uh, the, uh, College Trustee President Kirk Gruecky, Dr. Gray Homer, and Dr. Connolly of the college in small groups because we can't meet more than two commissioners or it's a public meeting. So we wanted to get everything out and understand why they had 20 million and understand, you know, what, what it was for. So they need to keep eight months' reserves, um, in funds on the school. Uh, they, so they have that. Um, they have projects in the works that they wanna do, and to be able to do these projects and not have to borrow as much, they had to start, you know, getting these funds, you know, and saving them. Because you can't just, like, if they wanna do, like how they did the McGuire, they have to have funds to be able to do projects like that, or we never have any growth in our college. And it also helps with our accreditation with the college. Um, so we, Commissioner Schick and I had our last meeting with them, uh, probably maybe three weeks before the meeting that we had on the 29th with the college. And that was how we were able to decide to take that $100,000. They had asked in their budget for $4,020,000. I think that's the exact figure, um, for their operating budget. So they were asking for the additional $100,000. It was after we had done the county budget. So we had had that extra $100,000 budgeted in our budget to be able to give to the college for their operating budget. So then when we saw that Sussex Tech was in such need, we decided that that $100,000 would be better suited for Sussex Technical School. So that $100,000, which is already in the budget that we have, will go to Sussex Tech, and, and the college did agree with this in our meeting. So that will go to Sussex Tech. We can do the transfer in November. As for, the college asked us for, uh, two, 2.3 million for Chapter 12 funding, where the county would match, uh, half of that, and the state does the other half. So the total amount would, to the county would be 1.15 million. So we spoke with the county, I mean, with the college at our one meeting, and they agreed, uh, you know, after we went back and forth, and we did have Elka, our CFO, was in that meeting with us, and they agreed to cut the Chapter 12 funding in half. So we took 1.15 million off of the Chapter 12 funding. Um, so that will save the county 575,000, which will remain in our capital budget for next year, correct? So, and we are, you know, the college felt they were being penalized for being, um, for being able to save and function without getting themselves in a deficit. So, but, but we don't look at it as that's the case, and we look forward to continuing working with the college to keep the college a healthy college, watch them grow. And, uh, I wanna definitely thank Kirk Gruecky, the President of the Board of Trustees, for all that he is doing, um, for the college, and Dr. Connolly and Dr. Homer. So that was that on the college. We were, we were very pleased. Uh, it was Commissioner Hayden, Commissioner Schick and I that went to the Board of School Estimate Meeting, and it was, it was good, correct?
President, it was good. We got a lot of information.
Yes.
Kind of gave us, pleased to ask more questions.
Yes.
In the future, kind of.
And, and their trustees that were involved in the meeting, and then the three commissioners and I, and this was a public meeting. Um, that was a public meeting, and we all agreed, and everybody was pleased with the outcome of that meeting. Um, and I too, uh, attended, uh, the Branchville American Legion Parade, and it was a huge turnout. I mean, there were people everywhere. It was great. They did a really, really nice job. And I attended Wantage Day and Newton Day. It's nice to see all these towns coming together. It's hard for us to attend them all. We just don't have enough hours in the day. Um, and I also attended a, um, an event for the Branchville Fire Department at AG's Pizza, uh, on Memorial Day. Uh, Commissioner DeGroot and I attended Memorial Day services at Woodborne Park in Wantage and the Beamerville Cemetery with the Sussex American Legion. I think Jack stayed for the whole day, and that's when I went off to the Branchville Parade. Uh, and on a personal note, I became a grandmother, again, for the second time to Walker Michael Space, and he was nine pounds, three ounces, and that was like two weeks ago. So I'm a proud grandmother for the second time. Okay. Thank you. Uh, next, we have, um, the, coming soon, the Open Forum for All Veterans, and it's gonna be in person and Zoom. An in-person will be the second Wednesday of each month, and the Zoom will be the fourth Wednesday of each month, and that'll be from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. And I believe that one is, oh, and it's here, at the One Spring Street Administration Building in Newton, New Jersey. We will have this posted and put it out there so that people can attend. And again, thank you, Lorraine Pence, our, uh, Deputy Administrator, for all that she does for our veterans. It's so important. Okay. Division of Health. The counties received numerous inquiries from residents about how to control gypsy moth infestations. Local county government does not conduct treatment for gypsy moth infestations. However, the county has been in contact with the New Jersey Department of Agriculture to relay the concerns and obtain guidance. The New Jersey Department of Agriculture operates a gypsy moth suppression program. Participation in this program is voluntary and is initiated by the municipality. The department conducts a statewide aerial deflation in the beginning of the summer. The department then mails municipal clerks a problem letter with an application for a free fall ground egg mass survey, which is conducted beginning the end of the summer and usually ending in December. The survey helps the Department of, the Department to identify the infestation locations and propose treatment areas for the upcoming spring. Along with the proposed treatment areas, the department provides an estimate of cost to the municipality. The department will meet with the participating municipalities to review the program, responsibilities, associated costs, and reimbursement options. Treatment for North Jersey begins in mid-May. The department monitors both from ground and air and schedules aerial treatments. The county would like to urge municipalities to contact the New Jersey Department of Agriculture directly about their specific infestations to obtain the available treatment option. If you think you are having an infestation of gypsy moths, please visit New Jersey Department of Agriculture's website at newjersey.gov/agriculturedivisionspi-progypsymoth.html for more information about the gypsy moth suppression program. I know this has kept you busy for at least the last week with a lot of, uh, concerns from the municipalities. So thank you. And, uh, I did have to reach out to, uh, Assemblywoman Dawn Fantasia today because she would have been all over this if she was still Commissioner. Uh, Division of Senior Services, Fifth Annual Senior Olympics. The Division of Senior Services will host Sussex County's Fifth Annual Sussex Senior Olympics at Maple Grange Park located at 36 Maple Grange Road in Burton Township on Wednesday, June 26, 2024, from 8:30 to 2:30 with the rain date of June 27. Teams of seniors from various townships will compete with one another for a day full of camaraderie, activities, food, entertainment, and fun, culminating in an awards presentation and closing ceremonies. Last year was such a great event. There were so many people there, and I was surprised because the weather just was not nice. So hopefully this year, there's much better weather. Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program. The Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program provides financially eligible individuals who are age 60 years and older with a one-time $50 electronic benefit to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables at participating farm stands in New Jersey. This once-a-year benefit is available at the Division of Senior Services Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 4:30. Eligible seniors who are disabled and not able to come into the office can have an application and their benefit mailed to them. In addition, senior services staff will be distributing vouchers at the locations below during June. June 13th, 2024, from 10:00 to 11:30 at Conchetta Towers, 75 Catlin Road, Franklin. June 19th, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 11:30, Franklin House Senior Apartments, One Mill Street, Franklin. And this benefit will be avail, available from June 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2024, and must be redeemed by November 30th, 2024. Please contact Senior Services at 973-579-0555 to apply or obtain specific qualifications. Design a pin contest for the 24th Annual Salute to Military Veterans. Each year, a patriotic design contest is held amongst students, and the winning design is made into a pin. These pins are given to all veterans during the Annual Salute to Military Veterans Parade, which will be held this year on November 3rd. Sussex County students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grades are encouraged to submit a pin design expressing their support and appreciation to the veterans of Sussex County. The deadline for submission of a pin is June 21st, 2024. For further information, contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1226, or seniorservices@sussex nj.us. Okay, number 10, Approval of Consent Agenda.
Here's no consent.
Is none, okay. Number 11, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Meeting of May 23rd, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of May 23rd?
So moved.
That was everybody. I love this. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner DeGroot seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. Okay, number 12, we have no ordinance. Number 13, Appointments and/or Resignations. Appointment of Douglas J. Stuntcar, Esquire of the Law Firm, Florio Perucci, Steinhardt, Capelli, and Tipton LLC to the position of County Council part-time for the County of Sussex pursuant to NJSA 40A colon 9 dash 43 for a three-year term to commence July 1st, 2024, and expire June 30th, 2027. Can I get a motion to, okay, Commissioner Hayden and a second.
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. You, you do a great job. Okay, number Can I get a motion to adopt the resolutions A through Z?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney, the second, Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Number 15, Awards of Contract Change Orders Bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the Award of Contract Change Orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolutions A through D?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden and a second, Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? Roll call.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Okay, number 16, Financial. Uh, Payment of Bill's List A. Can I get a motion to pay Bill's List A?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden and a second, Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes. I'll leave the air conditioning is paid.
I'm cold.
You guys gotta work that out.
I know. Okay. Uh, B, uh, Payment of Bill's List B. Can I get a motion to pay Bill's List B?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner DeGroot and, uh, Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Abstained.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution C?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner DeGroot and a second.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Okay, number 17, Personnel Agenda of June 12th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Okay, number 18, Administrative Report.
Thank you, Director. Uh, real quick, the gypsy moth thing, yeah, I've learned more about gypsy moths in the last couple of days than I care to, to admit to. Um, to the point where if they get too big, they can't spray. Where I come from, you get a bigger sprayer, but that don't seem to fly into the eyes of the Board of Ag. But anyway, um, there is additional information going out tomorrow to all the municipalities on the ABCs of how the Ag Board goes through their applications. We got that today, um, from the director, and he's been very, very instrumental of interacting with a few of our municipalities that have reported, particularly Wantage, that we had a terrible time with them, but they're countywide. So we will blast that out tomorrow to all the, the mayors, the administrators, the clerks of the, of the, of the municipalities on the ABCs of how to interact with the Ag, apply for the evaluations and such, so that we can get ahead of all of this. Um, I had the pleasure of, today, of going down to Mercer College and participate in the, in the League of Municipalities, what they call a mini-conference. And that is, uh, mid-year, they have these training schedules that you can go to to update. A lot of us have to get CEUs to keep our licenses up and such of that nature, but they had a lot of good programs on various topics. For, the three that I attended to is the new, uh, local finance, uh, law that's gonna come down in November. It has to do with the, uh, accumulation of sick and vacation time and the approvals of that and the limits of that. There's new boundaries that are gonna be set. They, it's a joint, local finance notice between the DCA and the comptrollers. They're taking, they're taking more control of it and getting the perceived, not perceived, but the abuse of it out of, out of the policies. Um, I attended a, the Ethics of AI training today, and that was a very eye-opening experience where AI, and it's, and it's, and it's, it's got a tremendous amount of benefit to increase efficiencies and performances in, in operations. It has equal amount of protections that you have to put in to be able to use it. You tell AI to do something you don't wanna do, you're gonna get it three times worse than what you started with. But if you do it right, if you put the right information in the data, and it's a very efficient, uh, process. What that led back to all of us that were in that meeting, we have to write and, and audit very stringent policies on how we're gonna use AI. You just don't buy that off the shelf and hand that to your employees and tell them to go with it. It's a very dangerous process if you, if you don't have strict guidelines on it. There's also two bills in the, in the Hopper, A3854 and A3911. The state's gonna put legislation on, uh, different requirements that if you go buy AI equipment, you're gonna have to audit the bias and then audit the process of what that process is gonna do and how you're gonna implement it, and how you're gonna internally audit those things that are allowed to be used in AI. And then lastly, I went to the Sustainable Jersey update, and I would, I would suggest for those of us that go to the league in the November to participate in one of their one-hour updates. They've got a lot of things coming down the Hopper, particularly with grant opportunities for 25. Anywhere from EV chargers to EV, uh, electric vehicles to any energy improvement processes. It's a great, it was a great update. It's exciting. They're putting, uh, more, more grant opportunities in. It's exciting. They're putting more grant opportunities in there. And they've also been able to solicit state contracts for EV equipment, such as chargers and vehicles that are on the state contract, will be on the state contract in two thousand twenty-five, but they're not now. It makes it easier to purchase that kind of stuff. So it was a great day, a great learning experience, and all I got.
Ron, that AI has Terminator written all over it.
It is. I was such an eye-opening experience. We did a couple of examples in the training. And while I did some great things, you know, you said, write a, write a letter for somebody that didn't get the job. And it wrote it. It was beautiful. It was very elegantly done. It was accurate. There's other things. There's an attorney in New York right now that's in real big trouble. He put a finding in and did it through AI, a briefing. And it's very well done. The legal references in the briefing were not real. They didn't exist. That's actually in New York right now. It's a case study that everybody's using to say, hey, you better make sure when you submit something, it's accurate. So it's very eye-opening. It's very eye-opening. When you put something in AI, you're going to get one thing in there, and you're going to get X times when it comes out. I can go on and on and on, but it's very, it's all about making sure that it's accurate and you know exactly what you're putting in that AI system, what you want to get out of it. More to come to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Number nineteen. County Council Report.
Three quick things. Not surprisingly, our Oprah litigation of the state's been adjourned again. The jail walkthrough is scheduled for Friday, so...
What time, Doug?
Off the top of my head, Friday morning.
For the final appraisal?
Yeah. So I'll send you a note or reach out to you.
And we're actually, he's going to actually walk it?
Yeah, his work's done. We're just going to walk through and kind of compare.
And Ron, on that note, I know we changed that property line. Is that marked?
That's marked. The subdivision line is done.
Yep, okay.
And we have the same group that's surveying it giving us the proposal to put the plan documents together, so we can do the meeting with Newton. And I think we're going to have to meet with the county.
Correct.
So all that is in the works.
Very good.
Yep, everything's moving pretty fast now.
Awesome.
And I know you have Dennis Library up in your next item, but our work's done on that front, so it's in your capable hands.
Wish it all on me. Okay, thank you. Okay, number twenty. Unfinished business. I'm going to start with Sandy Hall. I just want to tell you that we're hoping to have that resolution ready to oppose the national park at the next meeting. We didn't get it onto this one, but...
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, the board is all in agreement with you. So I just wanted to make sure that we said that. And this is for county council or Ron. Have we heard back from the U.S. Attorney or the AG in reference to the letter that we sent in the packet three weeks ago at this meeting that we approved on the boot camp? Okay, thank you. Okay. Dennis Library. This is not an easy process, but as promised, the county has completed yet another revision to send to the State Library Association. As you may recall, the first revision was sent some months back, and the State Library Director advised that there was a change in the formula used to determine the award amount. The county was then again required to complete a new revised application. The original application called for a total project cost of six million, five hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. The grant award being sought would have been three million, eighty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, with a county match of three point five million. This was pre-COVID, and as everyone recalls, the costs skyrocketed post-COVID, which would have required the county to cover a significant increase toward the project. The revised project total application submitted was four million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents. The grant award sought, we thought, would have been two million, sixty thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, with a county match of two million, sixty thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents. Unfortunately, that's not when we, unfortunately, that's when we were advised the formula changed. So the revised application would request a grant amount of one million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, with a county match of two million, five hundred and forty-eight dollars, nine hundred, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. Same project total. These funds have already been encumbered through a resolution utilizing the homestead funds, and the total county match is still under the one million from the original application. And is a new resolution needed to submit the revised application? Yes, okay. Before we have discussion, can I get a motion to submit a second revised application to the State Library Director for the grant to complete the renovations to the Dennis Library?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick makes the motion and a second.
Second.
And Deputy Director Carney? Any discussion? I'll start. I feel that we need to get this done. Accessibility should be our number one factor here. I'm sure that we've all been in this library, and, you know, I've been in there. I've toured it. And the fact that the restrooms are upstairs is a problem because not everybody can go in the library because you cannot go upstairs, you know? Like they said, those in wheelchairs can't go up there. Even seniors can't all do stairs. The room up there is where they have the activity room, I think, is upstairs also. So I would like to see this project come into full effect, and let's get this over with. Anyone else want to comment? And I'm hoping that my fellow commissioners will support it.
I, you know, being here the longest, which isn't that long, been dealing with this for a long time, and it's a shame that we had to go through it. But I will say, I am glad that I brought this up with the inflation the way it was because that, from that, when we checked it out for, with inflation and materials, it was up a significant amount, upwards of one and a half million, if I recall. So I think it's a good compromise at the end of the day. And accessibility, like as you pointed out, Director, is important to the residents. We shouldn't have any buildings that we own not ADA accessible.
Yes.
Thanks. The benefit of you ladies that have been coming longer than I have. The real change between the last one and this one was a footprint change, a square footage change. It got a little smaller. And then the change between the last submission and this one, as the director said, was we thought it would be a fifty-fifty-ish split like last time, which it wasn't. So the county actually is contemplating adding up more money so they can still keep the same number. And that's what's going to be considered tonight because they didn't want to make it any smaller or do any less than they'd already committed. So if they vote in favor of doing it tonight, we'll be putting in more than.
And this is our final vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is it. So this is it. So, okay, any others?
You know where I stand on that. I just think with all the other libraries that need repairs, I would put the money there, but that's just me. I know we're getting the grant, but it's still money coming out of our budget.
But there's a lot of people, like my thought, like in Newton, that walk to the library. You know, it's part of our, this is the center hub of the county, and it's another service that we're offering to those in our county.
It was a library's...
And if I could add to that, Director. Statistically, from a numbers standpoint, I love numbers. But Will Porter's comprehensive report, I believe, it was either during my orientation or just in a meeting with him. He showed, you know, the attendance, the utilization. And believe it or not, yeah, Dennis Library did have, out of all the libraries in Sussex County, the highest utilization rate. So from a numbers standpoint, it is very active, both on the street, you know, to people observing in a library, but also on paper statistically. So...
I get it. I just think the money would be better used at the other libraries and give it back to the taxpayer. We just differ on that. That's all.
I just want to put out for you, Bill, if you would like to switch liaisons, if you don't want to be a library liaison.
Oh, no, I like libraries. I love, look, I have a huge library in my own house. I mean, I'm a library guy. I just think libraries need some work.
Well, if I could just add too, so we're not giving any money back to the taxpayer because this is homestead money, so that's not the case here.
Could be put to the other libraries.
Yeah, and you're right. I mean, that could happen, but you're giving up that grant.
I get it. I get that too. But the other libraries all need work, according to what I've seen.
And just to be clear too, whether we vote yea or nay right now, this is not a guarantee. So just so everybody knows, this is going to go to the state librarian, right? State librarian, is that what it's called, right? And then she'll decide if it's a yea or nay. So just so everybody understands that.
To everybody's credit, they did do a lot of hard work to try and make it happen. I just have a fundamental disagreement. It's not that I don't like libraries. There was a lot of work done. So it's just, my thoughts on budgets are a little different. That's all.
I'm a strong conservative, but I feel like sometimes you have to spend money to make things better.
I'm not sure that we're spending money incorrectly. I think we're providing a service to our constituents. Being a resident of Newton and having been part of the fabric of the young people coming through the school systems here, they're all in walking distance. They have a much less income level. A lot of them are single-parent, you know, minded. And this is an incredible resource for them to make it ADA compliant and to update it so that they could be with the 21st century. Legit is the way we should go, in my opinion. And I don't think that we're overspending or irresponsibly spending. I think we're putting it exactly where it should be. And that's not a dig at Commissioner Hayden. That's just my opinion of how we're spending the money and why. Certainly, the seniors have a, it's part of their, it's part of their life. They, you know, mid-afternoon, early evening, very, going to be very well lit. It's going to be easily accessible. It's going to give them the resources that they need as well. So, I mean, from young children to senior citizens, it's the right way to spend money.
All right, great. Okay, can I get a roll call, please?
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
No.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number twenty-one. New business.
I have new business. Just real quick. You know, we went over, you know, Branchfield Day, Frankford Day, Hardeston Day, all these days that we all have throughout the county, which is great. Really is great. But I was at Papal City today, and I was talking to a councilman from Andover. And I'm like, you had like, last week, there was like three. You had Newton, you had Andover, and maybe Hardeston?
No, last week was... No, last week was Newton, Hardeston.
Well, you had Hampton.
Newton, Sparta, and all the...
Hampton. All right, so long story short, we all know what we're getting at. So we had a lot. So maybe as a county, we could spearhead a calendar with them, and maybe we do it at our next mayoral luncheon, and just get them together. And, you know, they could get fifty to a hundred more people at every day, every, you know, municipality day. Just think it would be a good idea, and I think we, as commissioners or the county, should spearhead that design. And that way, again, we could stagger them and get some more people. I mean, I like to go to different days. I mean, we're county commissioners, right? We represent the whole county. It'd be nice to not pick and choose and be able to...
It's hard to do four in one day.
You're a better man. We had this discussion last year, Chris. Say again? We had this discussion last year. Did we? This year, we need to pull the trigger then, if we did. It is. It's just a lot. It's a lot. And I just think it'll help out the municipalities. I feel like you don't agree with me, Jill.
I think you're right. I think, because I don't, in my opinion, personal opinion, I think that the municipalities don't care if we come. They care. They want to, they're doing it for their residents of that town.
You know what it seems like, though? And just that the three and a half years I've been here, it seems like every day, like the Wantage Day and the Hardeston Day, like they're getting, they're getting bigger and bigger. You had the helicopters coming, not this day and this day. You know, they're just, I don't know, it seems more Carnival-esque. If that's even a word.
It is now.
You know, it's just, I just think if, we'll put it out there.
I mean, we can put it out there.
If they say no, then at least we try.
If they're interested, yeah. Yep. I mean, they all can't have their own day because that would be, you know...
Every weekend in the summer.
It would be...
Well, even if they did a different time, you know? This one did eight to twelve, then you got twelve to four. Whatever we can work out, if we could just try to help out and...
Actually, that isn't in play right now because Andover started and went from two to eight and had fireworks. And Greens started at eight a.m. or ten a.m., excuse me. So they are kind of working with each other to make sure that we can service the footprint on these regional towns that have three or four towns in each high school, High Point, Kidotini, Newton. They're able to get everybody who goes to their schools to their day together, and they can all circulate as, you know, the group of schoolchildren and families that are together. So they are doing some of that scheduling, you know? At least Andover Township did. So, I mean, it's...
Any other new business, Lorraine?
Just on that, as a person that has a table, let me tell you a few things.
Yes.
We have to give up some days because we don't have staff doing it. So when you're looking at having different tables at each of the events, spreading it out makes us be able to provide more information.
Right.
Perfect. That's good. Good point. Point taken.
Okay, number twenty-two. Public session from the floor. This public session, if anyone's wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics, please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden and a second. Commissioner DeGroot? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, the floor is open.
Sam Seaman, Stillwater Township. Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Was waiting for that.
Let's see here, I'm very happy to hear as a Vietnam veteran that you're going to have veteran meetings each month. So, and in addition to that, I would hope that a commissioner who is also a veteran would come to Stillwater and attend some of the veteran activities that they have there. Just a couple of other brief points. Commissioner Carney, you gave such a rapid presentation that I was unable to follow you and I would hope that you would make all of your remarks available to the public.
They will be.
They will be.
Okay.
Which, which, just, not to me interrupting, you'll get your time, which, or my district 24?
No, I give you more time if you interrupt.
I, you'll have plenty of time. Which part did you get, my district 24?
It was, it was that very lengthy, the work that you spoke so rapidly, I couldn't follow.
And the reason why I do that is because not everybody here really cares about what I'm reading, to be honest with you, but at least we'll have the minutes and you could always listen to it, there'll be an audio as well, just, just so you know. And I'll be more than happy to give you my paperwork if you'd like to read as well.
Oh, well, good. I see what I'm asking.
I'll give it to you.
As you've determined with the veterans meetings, email to commissioners don't have, provide the same dynamic that a face-to-face, small group meeting provides. Like, I'll go back to the library commissioners, the J.C. commissioners, something like that. You know, when you're talking face-to-face and there's a dynamic that occurs that does not occur on videos, doesn't occur in emails, doesn't occur in real time, you know, where I'm working at my telephone and talking like that. So I would encourage you to consider other small group meetings around certain issues in the county. And then the last thing is to support one of the other commissioners' responses, well-spent taxes is not foolish. Well-spent taxes are a benefit to the community, that's why I pay taxes. I want to see the benefit to the community. So I'm happy that you really considered the impact of good taxes going to the library. Thank you so much.
Mr. Seaman, real quick, can I just, can I just get your email address and then Christina can email you my, yeah, is that right?
If you want to hang back after the meeting and I'll get your information. Okay, thank you.
That way you can have it.
Sir, before you leave, I would be happy to come to the Stillwater Veterans Event and I'd like to say welcome home.
Yes, yes. And on that note, before we go to the next person, I, I attended something that you might be interested in that Sussex Tech had. They had a Vietnam Veterans Semi, Seminar where they had, you know, it was for the students, this was just recently, I was supposed to read it in my comments, but I missed it. They had different stations set up and they discussed topics with the students and they ranged from Agent Orange, the draft, military tactics, and protests at home. And that was for all the students in Sussex Tech and they had invited a bunch of different veterans from Vietnam in there to speak with the kids. It was wonderful event, so, thank you again for your comments, we will take them.
Hi there, P.L. Just from Leighton. Would like to make some comments that I enjoyed, all, listening to all of you here on the board. However, Mr. Hayden, Commissioner Hayden, constantly has either a cough every few seconds, clearing nervous throat, sniffing, hacking, and worse of all, when he snorts, he swallows it. Oh, gross, oh, it's gross.
Let's not make.
It's been going on every couple of seconds and I think Mr. DeGroot should move because I don't want you to get sick. Okay, thank you. You should wear a mask or have a piece of plastic up so that.
I've had the doctors look at it, it's a throat problem.
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. I know you people are probably tired of seeing me, trust me, I have better things to do with my evenings. However, I've lived in this county for, it's 39 years, it'll be 40 years soon, and I'm very concerned about what's going on in the county. So that's why I continue to come back to meetings and once again call for Mr. Hayden to resign. The issues that Commissioner Hayden has created between the stolen valor and the pantry, and food pantry, have caused the county Republican Party a large schism at this point in time. With all the issues that could be addressed and hopefully will be addressed despite what's going on, such as affordable housing, food substantive, employment opportunities, drug addiction, just to name a few things, the focus seems to be on taking sides within the party as to whether you're on the Hayden side or the other side. You're on the, the food pantry is bad or the food pantry is fine side. This is very unfortunate and unfortunately on social media and what people I've heard discussing is basically these type of topics. I think perhaps, maybe it's time to reevaluate our choices per county government and perhaps in the future we need to think about it and make better choices for candidates that we want on our government. Thank you, thank you.
Wendy, Wendy of Andover Township, I just wanted to provide additional information for what Mr. Seaman was talking about when it comes to commissions. At the time that I worked for the Sussex County Library, there was a library commission and he's very correct in saying that there is another level of places for people to come to advocate for the library. And what happened with the library commission is when we had two large building projects, much larger than the Dennis Library, it was the building of the library in Sparta Stanhope Road, the, he was Child's Library and Darby Henry in Vernon, because they were the legally constituted body, many of the things that had to happen as far as grant writing, as far as expenditures and purchasing, did not have to go through central county government. So what has taken us a year to do here probably would not have taken that long because they had the ability to, to operate on behalf of the county as a legally constituted legal body. So those kinds of things prevent some of the committee of the whole kinds of things that you have to deal with all the time, that the, the library commission was able to do a lot of those things and then call on county council for additional support. I think Sussex County, I can't give an exact number, but more counties than not have library commissions still. So just to give you some additional information and support.
I'm, I'm, I just, Wendy, yeah, just, just, maybe I'm not hearing it right, maybe I'm just misunderstanding and I get your point, I totally get your point. It makes things a lot easier, that's why you have subcommittees, I'm a big true believer in subcommittees, I sat on a lot of them. But having that liaison, like you or anybody here, Mr. Seaman or Eleanor, like, you should be able to talk to Commissioner Hayden.
I think you're right when it comes to the citizen input part.
Yeah.
The part that I'm thinking about is the actual administrative portion of how the county library ran. It didn't, everything didn't go through central county government.
Yeah.
You know, hiring was done by the library commission, all of the, all of the grants and the purchasing through state contracts, whatever we were doing, that was all done with the library commission, it did not have to come through central county government and it didn't have to come before the freeholder board for some of those things that they were legally constituted to do that. And I think that, that, first of all, you have five normally, or six people who are library advocates themselves, they were chosen, the library commission was chosen and installed by the freeholder board, but they were people that had best interest in libraries and they were able to act on behalf of the county from the library's hand without everything having to go before the freeholder board. So in that regard, some of what has taken a while in your capacity to try to help Dennis Library, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm grateful, I'm very grateful, but I wanted to try to support what Mr. Seaman said, would not have taken this long.
And it's time.
But they would have had.
Just one more second, just, because I want to ask you another question.
Yeah, they, they would have had the ability to take care of some of those grants, for example, the grants were written directly by the county library staff, approved by the county library commission and sent to the state librarian.
Then they wouldn't be county employees either.
They were county, they were, they were county employees.
Right, okay, so they're, the only thing that like strikes me odd is then, then the commissioners who we have to oversee the county government in whole, wouldn't be voting on any salaries, so it would.
So my understanding of that way, that commission form works is why you could have, the, the commission would set, would set policies, would also oversee the budget, the budget itself would still be established, what's allocated to them or how that works, still established by this commission board and no one would form, or at least I certainly would never allow a commission like that to be formed without reserving back to the commissioners like veto authority, so, at the end of the day, it would still ultimately have oversight.
Right, and then I think that this probably would have been a no if we didn't have as much hands-on as we did, you know, then, then the commissioners, we probably would have voted no on it.
I can't, I can't say to that, but I would say there, the two large projects that we worked on when I worked for the county, there was no problem having them approved by the board. And because they are trusting the body that they have.
But they wouldn't have had access to the homestead money, you know, so it, it, they wouldn't.
They would ask the county.
Right.
But, but what I'm saying is the actual practical running of the county library did not require this committee of the whole kind of approach. I see what you're saying, that, that helped you understand, but I saw Everett Kumpel, who was the county library commission head, take freeholders through facilities in the county and explain to them, so it, it would have worked.
And just one, one last question too then, so why did it disband?
I don't know.
Well, look at.
I don't know.
Look at what happened with the two schools, they have their own school boards and there were problems, but yet the citizens came here and we worked it out because of them or, you know, I may not agree, but through democracy it was worked out.
Yeah, I was no longer working for the county.
So I think this way actually worked with more satisfaction.
Yes.
I, I understand you want the commission in some, but we have two schools with school boards and that didn't kind of pan out.
Yeah, and I can't speak to those individuals and who was directly involved, but that's, was my experience for how that worked when I worked for the county and we had those great big building projects of this kind.
Okay, thanks, I was just kind of curious and seeing how it was working, yeah.
We don't allow people to come back up.
Yeah, we don't come back.
Sorry, that's, that's the county policy.
You know, that's unfortunate because I was director of social services for 16 years and I can give you some clarification points if you want to, otherwise I'll shut down.
Right, you, but I will give you my number if you want to.
You can pull us aside and do that.
Yeah, or, or talk us out of there.
I'll come back next month.
Okay, that would be great. We have a meeting, we have a meeting today.
Two weeks.
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks, sir.
Thank you, we would love to have you. Anyone else?
Can you just talk up so they can hear you behind you?
Plus it's being.
Brian, it's being recorded up here too, that's the other accent. I'm here to invite you to Saturday's Flag Day Parade in Pat Con. I think you all know, we all been to our parties that we have down in Pat Con, we have big ones, and it's going to be followed by a party down at Veterans Park that you all have been to and everybody in public is invited to leave. Come to Pat Con this Saturday, thank you.
Thank you. Just need you to restate your name and municipality, I apologize.
No, no, that's okay, I just figured you all knew. Irene Buckley, Green Township. I would like to comment on Mr. Carney's, or Commissioner Carney's suggestion about the township days, I think it's excellent. I think it would be very nice to have all of the commissioners at every single one of the township days, that's my personal view. It's a great way to do outreach, most people don't know who you are, any of you. And I would like to personally thank Commissioner Schick for being at the Green Township Day and presenting our town with this bicentennial award from the state, I guess it was, and that was very, very nice. It would be nice to receive one from the commissioners as well.
We did not receive a request from the township, so we were unaware.
Okay, you did, you were, you were.
That that ceremony was occurring, we had received no notification from the township, otherwise we would have, the board would have put a proclamation together.
Quite ignorant of that. I'm joking.
They're not here.
Yeah, there's usually a procedure that they know how to follow.
Because I am. So anyway, I think that's an excellent idea. And I say that because I organized the first Green Township Day that we ever had in 1986 and that was sort of the beginning, start of, you know, township days. It was not a common thing prior to that to have these township days, I don't think. I remember seeing a, a flag upper advertisement for Byram Township and I believe that was one of the first towns in Sussex County that fits in. And it's just a very nice way to get not only the people in the town together, but people in other towns to come and know each other and have, you know, communication ability in, amongst the town. So that's my suggestion and it's a compliment to Mr. Carney.
Thank you.
Who I've never met before.
And if we can get this on, Commissioner Carney, hopefully we'll attend all 24.
I will be as, as many as possible, yes, I will.
I know that I can't attend all 24 because I have to work on weekends.
Unless Walpax, having one will be 23.
Well, I think, I think coordinating them on Saturday, Sunday, you know, you can even do Friday evening, you know.
One minute, ma'am, I gave you extra time. I account for the interruption.
Anyway, I will, I will take it anymore, I wanted to compliment you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great idea.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Schick, for attending.
Very welcome, it was my honor to be there.
Yeah, it was very nice to have you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business? Okay, Commissioner Schick makes a motion, Commissioner DeGroot second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Number 23, Reminder, please check the county's website, www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Number 24, Executive Session.
Resolution regarding providing an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12 at SEC, whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated below. Item number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations and the attorney-client privilege, prosecutor's office, administrative code. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. And be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public. And be it further resolved that the Board does not, does not expect to take formal action after returning from executive session except to adjourn the regular meeting.
Okay, can I get a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden and Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn from executive session and return to regular business?
So moved.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney and a second from Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, adjourned. Wait, we have, we did a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yeah.
I.